Now called to order, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McGurven.
Here.
Ms. Witchy.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thanks, Megan. First item on the agenda this evening are a couple of proclamations.
Okay, the first proclamation is for Sikh Heritage Day. Whereas Sikhism is a religion founded by the Punjab region of South Asia over five centuries ago, and introduced to the United States in the 19th century. And whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest world religion with approximately 25 million adherents from diverse backgrounds throughout the world, including 500,000 adherents in the United States. And whereas Sikh Americans have made important contributions to the social, economic, and cultural fabric of our city, and continue to make strides towards securing religious liberty as patriotic members of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas Sikhs in the United States pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the economic vibrancy of the United States as farmers, engineers, doctors, scientists, and business owners. And whereas Renton is one of the most multicultural cities and home to people from all over the world. And whereas Renton prides itself on being a city where people of all faiths and cultures are welcomed, respected, and able to live in harmony with each other. And whereas during the month of April, the Sikh community celebrates Vaishakhi, also known as Kalsa Day, which marks the beginning of the harvest season and the Sikh New Year. And whereas Vaishakhi is one of the most religiously significant days in Sikh history, commemorating the creation of Kalsa, a fellowship of devout Sikhs and Guru Govend Singh in 1699. And whereas events such as this celebrate the rich cultures and traditions that contribute to the unique character of our city. Now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2017, to be Sikh Heritage Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. And witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this third day of April 2017, signed by Dennis Law, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council adopt the proclamation as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a number of friends from Sikh community here this evening to receive this proclamation. And if you'd like to come up, Megan will present you with the proclamation and please go to the podium and save a few words.
Hello, everybody. So, being a part of the Sikh community, which is one of the fifth-largest religions in the world, I can speak on behalf of all of us when I say it is truly an honor to have April 14th be proclaimed as Sikh Heritage Day. So thank you, Mayor and council members, for making this possible. And we invite all of you to on every Sunday to come and visit us at our godwar, which is located in Renton. And we also would be so honored if you guys could all visit us on our Kalsa Day Parade, which is May 21st.
At Shower Center.
At Shower Center in Kent, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, the next proclamation is regarding Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 to 17 are 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. And whereas on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, support survivors, and speak out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas prevention is possible when we increase education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 2017 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. And witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this third day of April 2017, and this is signed by Dennis Law, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Mr. Corman, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And I believe Mary Ellen Stone is here from King County Sexual Assault Resource Center.
Thank you so much. Just a couple things. Council members, thanks for your continued support. Mayor Law, thanks for your leadership on this. I'm very excited to say we have 25 cities and counting who have taken a pledge to declare Sexual Assault Awareness Month for the month of April. That's great because it gets people talking, and we can't stop something unless we talk about it. I have be loud buttons for you, that I will give these up to the clerk. And I would invite you to wear them this month and start conversations with people because we tend to prevent sexual assault, but we need to be talking about it, and we need to change behaviors and attitudes and language, and this is a great start. Thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thanks, Mary Ellen, thanks for being here. Before we move on, we're gonna have, because of Sikh Heritage Day, we're gonna have everyone come up and we're gonna get a picture with the council. I like the fridge. Your calendar wrote it, you know?
I am all honorary today.
Okay. Now we have a very special presentation to move on to, and I'm gonna call Chief Milosevic up to make the presentations.
Good evening, Council President Pavoni, Mayor Law, members of the council, and the viewing audience. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to recognize several members of the police department this evening. The department has a formal process to select employees for recognition that involves every work group within the department. Employees are recognized on a quarterly basis, and one of the recognized employees is then selected as the employee of the year. I'll begin tonight's recognition with the employee of the third quarter, Officer Chris Reyes. Chris, can you come forward? Officer Reyes was recognized for several events that occurred last fall that demonstrate his leadership abilities, tactical skills, and work ethic. Last August, he became aware of a suspect wanted for a serious felony assault that was at his residence in the Highlands. On short notice, he gathered a surveillance and arrest team to apprehend this suspect. After a brief surveillance period, the suspect was arrested without incident, and a search was conducted where a substantial amount of heroin, methamphetamine, and firearms were recovered. In September, he conducted a surveillance for the problem residence in the downtown area. Within an hour, he arrested a known convicted felon in a stolen vehicle. Later that same day, he assisted other members of the department in searching for a known violent felon in the city. After interviewing associates involved, he was able to identify where the suspect was hiding. The suspect was concealed in a vehicle in the carport area of the residence. The suspect was again arrested without incident. These are examples, was her typical type of effort that Officer Reyes provides the community in his assignment, on a directed enforcement team. So congratulations.
Okay, Chris, smile.
If I could have Officer Thaddeus Kirkoff come forward? Officer Kirkoff began working as a school resource officer for Renton High School in March of 2016. As a result of his drive and ability to relate to students, he quickly faced this challenge and identified ways to have a positive impact with students at Renton High School. Since being at the school, Officer Kirkoff has been asked to be an assistant football coach, and he volunteered his time over the summer and into the fall season. Officer Kirkoff noticed that many of his football players had cleats that were in very poor shape, and some did not even have cleats. He held a private fundraiser and got over 10 pairs of used cleats, donated, and raised over $2,000 in donations to buy 20 brand-new pairs of cleats for his players and miscellaneous equipment that the team needed. On his own, Officer Kirkoff took the idea of our Coffee with the Cop program and made his own outreach program at Renton High School called Pizza with the Cop, where students and staff can sign up on Wednesdays and have lunch with him in order to get to know him better. This has made Officer Kirkoff more approachable to the students at Renton High School. Officer Kirkoff has an innate ability of a way of dealing with students who are in distress, and is willing to work through the hard questions regarding interactions between communities of color and law enforcement. Officer Kirkoff has a huge heart for kids at Renton High School and the downtown community. He has participated in many discussions regarding community policing and racial biases held by police while trying to find a solution to the division between his students and law enforcement in general. He is currently planning a teen festival scheduled for June of this year, where multiple agencies, organizations, and city assets will be needed to bring together an event for the youth of our community. Last but not least, Officer Kirkoff has been able to connect with the students and the community by setting up a Renton High School Facebook page for the School Resource Officer Program and an Instagram account. In the short time that his Facebook page has been set up, Officer Kirkoff has over 450 friends consisting of students, teachers, parents, and community members. He has gone outside the norms through technology and has provided the community and his students a direct way to contact him. For those reasons, he is recognized for Officer of the Quarter, Employee of the Quarter. This year, we're only recognizing three employees of the quarter, so I'd ask Officer Cassidy Steed to come forward. This past year has been a busy year with hiring of new officers in the department. During this time, Officer Steed has volunteered to be a temporary field training officer. He has used his extensive knowledge base on all aspects of policing to teach, guide, and mentor our new officers. Through his actions and words, he has modeled a way for our new officers to follow. Officer Steed currently works in the North Renton area, in which there are some identified residences that create a quality-of-life problem for their neighbors. They generate an extensive volume of calls associated with auto theft, burglaries, and other related crimes to include subjects with warrants. On a daily basis, Officer Steed makes his rounds at each of these locations, or implements an aggressive and successful proactive policing approach. Officer Steed models the values of valor and service as he comes to contact with career criminals and convicted felons on a regular basis. He displays the value of professionalism during these contacts, and treats everyone, whether he is arresting or warning them, with dignity and respect. Officer Steed is on a first-name basis with residents generating these issues, and is it apparent that they also respect and admire him for the manner in which he conducts himself. While not actively patrolling his district or backing other officers on their calls, Officer Steed can be found parked in a visible location in the downtown transit center. Without having to be asked, he has come to recognize the benefit of having a visible police presence in that area. This provides a safe atmosphere for citizens living, working, and shopping in that area, as well as a deterrent for those looking to prey on others. The downtown library manager complimented Officer Steed on always being consistent in his demeanor and professionalism when he does his regular walkthroughs. She said that she has noticed that everyone relaxes when it comes to the library, and its presence is greatly appreciated. So he was recognized as the employee of the quarter and the employee of the year. Last but not least, I'd ask that Sergeant Jason Trader come forward. Sergeant Trader has been selected to receive the department's Meritorious Service Medal for his outstanding contributions to our canine program. Sergeant Trader spent eight years as a canine handler with his partner boss. Following his meritorious service as a canine handler, Jason was promoted to sergeant and continued to use his experience and training as being the designated trainer for our canine program. The last couple of years, Jason raised and trained two of our current canines and assisted in the selection of our third canine. Sergeant Trader is well-known for insisting on high expectations of both the handler and the canine, and challenges each canine team to be the best. Jason's impact on the canine programs are well-known in the valley, as he assists other agencies in training their canine teams to meet a high standard. Jason recently completed the basic training for an hour of canine team while balancing the obligations and supervising his patrol squad. Jason has worked as a handler, mentor, and leader of our canine program. Through his dedication, work ethic, and contributions, Jason has and continues to play a vital role in our success of our program. And so for his outstanding performance of duty, Sergeant Trader has been awarded the department's Meritorious Service Medal. Congratulations. That is tonight's presentations, and we'll be having reception next door in the conference center, everyone's invited to attend.
Thank you very much, Chief. And I just want to say to Chris, Thaddeus, Cassidy, and Jason, we really appreciate the great work that you do. I know all these guys and gals back there are here to cheer you on, not just eat cake next door. So, good job, thank you very much for your service. Thanks, Chief. Okay, Angie, let's see, you beat that one. Moving on to a public meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Angie Mathias, I'm a planner here with the city in the Department of Community and Economic Development. I'm here tonight because a 10% petition for annexation has been submitted to the city clerk, and so I'm here to share some information with you about that. So, this is the annexation process, we're at the very beginning of the process, they've submitted that 10% petition to the city clerk, and now we're at that next step of council meeting with the petitioner. So, for this annexation, they're actually using an alternative, the alternative petition method. You have seen this annexation before, about a year ago, you authorized circulation of a 60% petition. That means that 60% of the owners of, 60% of the assessed value of the area sign a petition saying that they want to annex. The proponents of this annexation have worked really, really hard, but just can't quite get to the 60%. And so they would like to try this alternative petition method. This method is initiated by property owners that represent 10% of the acreage of the area, so instead of the property value, it shifts to acreage of the area, submitting a petition, and so they've done that. In order for a full petition to be certified as valid, they would need to return a petition that is signed by owners of the majority of the area and, or the majority of the registered voters in the area. So it's, some people call it sort of the 50-50 method, most of the acreage of the area and most of the voters. So state law requires this public meeting, and it's asking council whether or not you accept, reject, or geographically modify the area. If you accept the proposed annexation, you would then authorize the circulation of that alternative petition to annex, and you must also decide whether to require adoption of city zoning and bonded indebtedness. So, the annexation area is in the northeastern portion of the city, in the Highlands or the East Plateau area here approximately. At the eastern portion of our city limits, it's about 17.7 acres in size. The current uses are single-family and vacant, and you can see the boundaries there, to the north roughly southeast, 142nd Place, and then to the west, 154th Place southeast, and then parcel lines to the east and the south. Here's an aerial image of the area, you can see a large parcel, a few other large parcels here, but mostly, about half of it is built out with existing single-family. Sorry. So the topography in the area, we always look at the existing conditions and the environmental constraints of the area. You can see this red indicates that it would be a protected slope, so this area that is already built out with existing single-family houses does have some steep slopes, and you'll see that reflected in the zoning that's happened in this area already, the pre-zoning. There is an unnamed stream that's approximately 200 feet to the west. It is a type NP or non-fish-bearing, just a perennial stream, and there are no wetlands in the proximity of this area. Fire service for this area would be Renton Fire Authority, that's not a change if it were to annex. Water District 90 and Renton Sewer Utility are the designated water utilities for this annexation area, and those would not change upon annexation, and it is in the Renton School District, that also would not change with annexation. Currently in King County, it's designated urban residential medium, and that allows for a range of zoning between four and 12 dwelling units per acre, and the county has zoned it R4. In advance of the East Renton Plateau vote for annexation, the city pre-zoned the area, and so that, you can see that area that had the steep slopes was pre-zoned with R1, and then the rest of it was R4. So if the area annexes, that zoning would become effective upon annexation. We always look at our annexation policies. Goal LE of our comprehensive plan says that we promote annexation wherein, when it's in our best interests. Policy L8 says that we support annexation where infrastructure and services allow for urban densities, and it would consolidate service providers and/or facilitate the efficient delivery of services. And policy L9 asks that we consider the fiscal impacts for each proposed annexation, which we will do. So we always look at the Boundary Review Board objectives as well. This boundary, or this proposed annexation does use physical boundaries, so there's no concerns there. It's not an irregular boundary. It does not create, or doesn't create, the service agreements are already agreed to, so there's no change in that. And then it's of an uncorporated area to a city that's urban in character, and Renton is that being on the other side of the urban growth boundary, inside the urban growth boundary. Fiscal analysis, the existing conditions are that there are 33 dwellings inside of it with an estimated 92 residents. Future conditions, we assumed that there would be capacity potentially for up to 18 more dwelling units with an additional 51 residents. Costs increased at 3.3% annually, with revenue increasing to 2.5%, and that's limited to just sales tax, utility tax, and the franchise fee. So to the operating fund, existing would be about $47,000 in revenue and about $42,000 in costs. To year 10, if it were to build out with those additional dwelling units, it would be about $81,000 in revenue and $68,000 in cost to the operating fund. Capital and Enterprise Fund, revenues about $14,000 existing and about $6,000 in costs existing. Year 10, if it were fully built out, then it would be about $24,000 in revenue and about $12,000 in cost to the Capital and Enterprise Fund. So we always circulate these annexations to the different city departments, and they review it. All the departments responded that it represented a logical extension of their services and did not present any issues or concerns. In conclusion, it is in the best interest in general of the city to proceed with this annexation. It represents a logical extension of our services, it's consistent with our own policies, and it's consistent with the Boundary Review Board criteria. The recommendation of the administration is that council authorize the circulation of the alternative petition to annex and require acceptance of the city's zoning and assumption of the proportional share of our existing indebtedness.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? Any correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay. This is a public meeting, is there anybody here that wanted to testify on this annexation? What's the wish of the council?
Move we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the public meeting be closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the administration, I move that the, we accept the recommendations of the administration to authorize circulation of an alternative petition to annex and require acceptance of the city's zoning and assumption of proportional shares of the city's existing indebtedness.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council authorize circulation of an alternative petition to annex. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Angie. Okay, let's see, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Now we'll move on to audience comments, we've got several people who've signed up to address the council. When I call your names, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and then you have five minutes. We have a timer next to the city clerk. First is Bernie Docnell and David Hoffman, as a two-team.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Law and council members, for listening to what we have to say tonight about electric energy on the east side. My name is Bernie Docnell, I live at 13200 Lake Kathleen Road, southeast in Renton, where I've lived for 17 years, though I was raised in Renton and graduated from Renton High School. My husband and I own and manage several commercial properties in both Renton and Kent. And to be totally transparent, I worked for Puget Power for 12 years way back when. David, may I introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm David Hoffman, and my family and I live at 10824 Southeast 170th Street here in Renton, and we've been proud residents of the City of Renton for nearly 10 years. I work for the Master Builders Association as a King County manager in Government Affairs.
Thank you. David and I will both be speaking tonight, representing a new grassroots coalition called CURE, C-U-R-E, which stands for Communities United for Reliable Energy. We wanted to take a moment tonight to introduce CURE to you and to talk to you why we support reliable power and who we represent. CURE was formed for one purpose, to make sure that the east side communities have reliable power going forward. We came together because we care deeply about the east side communities, and we know that to continue to prosper, we have to have and have the quality of life we expect here on the east side. We needed to focus our efforts on supporting what is a critical economic infrastructure project, Energize East Side. The flyers that David passed out to you kind of give you an overview on that. I serve as a spokesperson for the 19-member CURE Steering Committee. We meet monthly, and our work is focused on engaging in a proactive, positive way to make sure that Energize East Side project gets built and built on time. Energize East Side is the upgrading of the transmission lines that have served us well for over 50 years. Our purpose statement reads, "CURE is a grassroots coalition of residents..." Our purpose statement reads, "CURE is a grassroots coalition of residents, civic leaders, businesses, schools, human resource agencies, and healthcare providers. We know that for our region to continue to prosper, we must have electrical infrastructure that is built on time to avoid rolling blackouts, use proven technology, and preferably on the existing utility corridor to deliver dependable power to our communities for the years to come. We are here to provide the voice of the broader community on this topic so that as leaders you are hearing from the entire community as you fulfill your role as council members and policymaking decision members moving forward with this project." My last comment is personal. As I have traveled around the world, I haven't been everywhere, but I've been to a lot of places, the difference I have seen between poor nations and those that prosper is education for all and electric power that provides homes and businesses the ability to prosper and advance in any economy. For that reason, I ask for your support for our project moving forward. David has a few comments.
Thank you. CURE's biggest concern is the prospect of PSE having to use rolling blackouts, as Bernie mentioned, as a way to manage our aging electrical transmission system should this project not get built on time. This is clearly unacceptable for all of us. 2017 will be a very important year for CURE and for Energize East Side. The Phase 2 draft EIS will be published in late April or early May. After that, many things will need to fall into place in order for this project to stay on track and on time. As we understand it, we need to have this infrastructure in place by the summer of 2018, which is right around the corner, or we face halving to plan for rolling blackouts. We all appreciate the leadership roles you have taken on as council members. Projects like these can be difficult. Working in the building industry, I'm right there with you. I understand how difficult these projects are and how difficult building projects of all kinds are. In the year ahead, you may hear voices trying to delay or stop this project. That is completely unacceptable. It has been over 50 years since this transmission system has been upgraded. We all know our, our east side community has grown and will continue to grow. We have simply outgrown our 50-year-old electrical transmission system, and we must address this in the year ahead as 2018 is looming. CURE has received support and endorsements from a wide variety of organizations, businesses, and individuals from across the east side, and we continue to have new supporters signing on every day. You will see these listed on the flyer that I handed out to you. Thank you for your time tonight, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Christina Fawcett.
Good evening. My name is Christina Fawcett from Renton, Washington. It is my understanding that about a month ago, a group of people came to speak in support of Renton becoming a sanctuary city, and I am here tonight to express my opposition to this. I hope that Renton will not become a sanctuary city as we have an obligation to obey all state and federal laws. And should we ever require federal funding in the future, it would be foolish for us to potentially go without this federal funding, as we may under the current administration, should we decide to make the political step of becoming a sanctuary city. You as council members have an obligation to the lawful residents and citizens of this country and to support all methods of funding for any emergencies or anything that the city may require. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Wendy Taggeter. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You did really good. Thank you. I live on southeast 169th in Renton. We've lived in Renton for 41 years and the same house for 40 years. All of our children were born and raised here. We have thoroughly enjoyed living in Renton, and I would like to address the possibility of Renton becoming a sanctuary city. I believe in being inclusive and welcoming to all the committee member, to all community members. Through our religious community, my husband and I have practiced these qualities of inclusiveness and welcoming when we, for many years, gave emotional, spiritual, and physical help to, to a large group of immigrants, the majority being illegal immigrants right here in Renton. We truly love them, and we worried about them. I believe in mercy. Mercy was shown to a man who was within this group, and we loved him, and in like, we just liked him immensely. He was a very nice man. He also was an illegal immigrant. One day, he decided to drink and drive. He caused a devastating accident that nearly severed one of his limbs. He spent weeks in Harborview, and mercifully, he didn't have to pay a penny for that. I believe in justice, but justice was not served when this friend of ours was released to drink and drive again. Justice required that he be turned over to ICE, and that didn't happen. He should have been deported, and that didn't happen. He was our friend. Sanctuary cities do not support justice when they refuse to turn over criminals. I believe in safety for all the types of people and residents who live in Renton. Last week, the Seattle TV news highlighted Renton as having a significant problem with crime. I'm sure we all saw that. Searching the website, crimereports.com, to which the city of Renton provides statistics, I found that in the past just three months, Renton has had 2,434 incidences of crime, mostly in downtown and the lower Highlands. And I have a snapshot on my phone if you're interested in seeing that. These include robberies, break-ins, assaults, property crime, violent crime, and a whole bunch of auto thefts I'm sure you're aware of. It was interesting to note that domestic violence, or family offense as it is stated in the report, was very insignificant. And although insignificant but terrible, domestic crime is often cited as a reason why police shouldn't ask for immigration status. This report suggests otherwise. These crimes are committed by all races, all nationalities, and all genders of people here in our community. Police shouldn't be held back from asking the status of any of the offenders that they encounter. We can be inclusive, we can be helpful, we can be loving to everyone in our community, and we can still maintain justice. Renton should not become a sanctuary city protecting those who break laws, no matter how much we like them. We deserve safety from our city officials by having them turn over our, the lawbreakers that are here to ICE. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Robert Taggeter.
Thank you for that pronunciation. You're in the minority. I've also lived in Renton 41 years. I got to do it all with this young woman who preceded me. The sanctuary city issue is kind of a hot button now, and we felt, I feel like I'm stepping out of a Norman Rockwell painting on freedom of speech, and would like to address that. I have lived in the community, as I mentioned, 41 years. We were annexed into Renton out of unincorporated King County, and I've been there ever since. One thing I really noticed was the improvement in the police presence in, in being in Renton as opposed to when we were in King County. We really feel represented and safe. With that thought, also background, I have an immigrant daughter, daughter-in-law, excuse me, who jumped through all the hoops in order to gain legal residence and also is a citizen. While she's been here, I think the closest thing to a brush with the law has been maybe her overdue library book. I'm here to state my opposition, should Renton consider being a sanctuary city? The rule of law is important. It's what helps a civilized society remain civil. It seems incongruous to me to put our federal tax support at risk, which may require additional tax support from Renton citizens in order to support non-citizens. If the city feels inclined to lend monetary support to those coming from other countries, it should be directed to the legal immigrants in our community. I read in the Seattle Times, and Doc and I tried to find that article today, and I couldn't, but when there was a discussion about refugees and where they came from, and it said that the largest immigrant population in, refugee population in Renton is from Moldova, which I thought was interesting. But it seems as though those from other countries are getting all the attention, the ones that aren't legal refugees. Governor Rensley indicated that we are less safe if a policeman takes the additional time to do a citizenship inquiry. That logic would argue we are less safe if a policeman takes the time to run a, a background report for outstanding warrants or for a subpoena on somebody they've pulled over or somebody they're arresting. I, I think many would, would not feel that that's a proper logic. So please leave the sympathy at taxpayer expense to the Seattle, to the Seattle area. Our public servants need to keep the well-being of its citizens at the forefront. I appreciate Renton, I appreciate your service, being here, serving we the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Milt Reimers.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Milt Reimers, resident of Renton. Last week, Ms. Cindy Parks of the Renton Police Department gave an outstanding presentation at the library to Lower Kennydale people. It was well-attended, the information she provided was outstanding, and I'm sure you're familiar with what she does as far as reaching out to communities. She actually made a presentation several years ago to our street by itself. We had had a series of break-ins, car thefts, car break-ins. 50% of the homes on our street had some occurrence, and we have taken the steps that she recommended several years ago, but the incidents continue. I am here because there were some things said at that meeting that really struck me. And this particular meeting last week was for the residents of Lower Kennydale, but I think it applies to the entire Renton community, and I do very much appreciate the works of the Renton Police Department. They're doing an outstanding job. I know there's a limited number of people, they'd like to have more, and that's where I'm sort of looking to you as possibly in the future being able to increase the budget for the police services. What was said at the meeting three times, and it says, "We are under siege." We are under siege. I mean, that is expressing despair, it's, it's expressing concern, and almost a panic by the neighbors that were stating that. And the thing that I also found in that particular meeting was that the people there are very interested in the well-being of the city of Renton and of their specific community, and they're willing to do what they can. All the things that Ms. Parks said, some of the people are already doing that, but I asked the question, what can we as a community, what can you as the city council do to enhance the security? Can we shut down some of these drug houses, either with the police department, or can the fire department say that these are fire traps and shut those houses down? What else might we do? Is there, do, and I don't know this, do we have a panhandling law in the city of Renton? Ms. Parks stated that the two things that are feeding this problem is the heroin epidemic along with homelessness, and that's where I'm thinking about the panhandling law. If we already have one, great. If we don't, then maybe that's something to do. But I think not only does each individual in each street, but the community at large needs to really take this on because, in a way, it's us against them, and they are very sophisticated in what they do, and they have no qualms about breaking in at any time, day or night. I was just with a gentleman at lunch today, and his, how, his home was robbed while he and his wife were in their house, and they stole about $8,000 of jewelry and cash, and unfortunately, the guy continued to sleep through this entire burglary. So it, as anyone who has experienced this, you understand that it's an absolute invasion of your privacy, you feel personally affronted, and I'm just trying to reinforce the concerns of the community and what we as a community can do. I feel that we are very, very receptive to doing what we can to help you, and hopefully you in turn can do what you can to help us as citizens. Thank you very much for your time, and I do appreciate anything that you can do, and I think the community, as I said, is very willing to step up and be a part of solutions, whether it's things that Ms. Parks mentioned, or those things that you think we need to do as a community at large.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight, and I know it is a huge level of frustration for the public, and I know what I'm going to say doesn't make you feel any more comfortable, but misery loves company. Renton frankly has fewer crimes than many of the surrounding jurisdictions. The heroin epidemic is clearly one of the things that is fueling a lot of the property crimes that we're seeing today, and it's, it's throughout the entire region. The thieves are very mobile, they're very desperate, they're, I understand they're trying to, to fund a couple of hits of heroin a day. They can buy it fairly cheaply, but they don't have any money, so they're breaking into cars, breaking into homes, pick up a laptop computer and sell it for $10 for a hit of heroin, and it's a real tragic situation. The police are arresting a lot of people, but there's an awful lot of people. If you drive through Seattle and look at the homelessness and figure out the percentage of those that are on heroin, you can see how huge the problem is. And nobody has the magic answer, but I appreciate the fact that you have met with Cindy and continue to meet with Cindy Parks, because the ideas that she's sharing with you, people need to adhere to those. You've got to lock your doors, you've got to watch out for your neighbors, you've got to keep everything out of your car because you become a target if you don't. And we have to continue to do what we do to try to identify those people that are committing them in our community, because that's all we can handle, and, and try and make as many arrests as we can. But the number one best thing is neighbors, watching out for neighbors, and hardening the targets, because the, the, the entire process of trying to get our arms around the homelessness issue and the heroin epidemic is, it is depressing. Nobody has many answers. In Seattle, they're proposing millions, tens of millions of dollars of initiatives to try to begin to address it, and an awful lot of us don't feel that that's really going to be the cure. So I'm sorry we don't have a clear-cut answer, but the fact that you're promoting the benefits of having Cindy come out to your neighborhood, I hope the rest of the neighborhoods do that, because they're, you know, we're ready to help people take all the precautions necessary to protect their property and their, and their loved ones. And the biggest thing is watching out for people that don't belong in your neighborhood. Don't worry about calling us. If it's a false alarm, that's not a problem, because our police officers know how to deal with that, and they, if they come down, they'll talk to people they don't belong there, or they may interrupt a burglary. That's how we're making arrests, and so, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could add to your, your good comments on this, I think we are, we are adding some extra officers too, right? We've got some in the academy, so, I mean, that was one thing that was asked for, and I know that the council is motivated to get more officers out there. Also, code enforcement, we're continuing to work that, and that helps go after the drug houses and things like that. And I did just want to add, we actually had Cindy Parks in, in my neighborhood, so we'd had a neighborhood watch meeting, again, just as everybody always says, excellent presentation. And your, your comment about hardening the targets, I, I wanted to point out that, that as she discussed with our, our neighborhood, you know, she, just as you say, people are, they're looking for that $10 laptop, but they're, they're looking to, to get in and out quickly. They, you know, if there's a window that's, that's easy to pry open and they can get it quickly, they'll do that. I think that the real trick is to make it difficult enough that in the time that it takes for them to do it, somebody's going to hear and somebody's going to be able to call that police officer and get, get somebody out. So it's, but we, we do need to do our part by continuing to make sure that we've got a supply of officers coming in, and frankly, I'm, I'm hearing enough from the community that I, I want to continue to make that a budget priority. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
This leads right into my favorite topic, everybody in the council knows.
This leads right into my favorite topic that everybody in the council knows. We have, the mayor and the council have supported a lot of new police officers. One of the problems that we're having is getting new officers when we hire them and getting them through the Washington State Academy. We cannot put an officer on the street by state law until he's been through the academy. The state legislature, in its wisdom, years ago, every time you, somebody gets a speeding ticket anywhere in the state, there's a good portion, they're like $130. $30 of that is the fine. The rest is all penalties to pay for the state academy. The state legislature, in their wisdom, took that money and just put it in the general fund and hasn't adequately funded the academy, which slows not only our department's ability to hire and train officers quickly, but statewide, and every city's having the same problem. We've addressed this with the legislature, and they've given us a short-term fix, but if you ever talk to your state legislatures, tell them to fund that academy fully so we can get these police officers. We have money to hire more police officers. We just can't hire them because we can't train them. And that's my bully puppet, Paul, that I've been on this for several years.
And it's helped. I mean, we are getting more people, but that has been a roadblock, so. And every jurisdiction is hiring, so there's a backlog for every department that's trying to hire more police officers, so, yeah, it's a challenge. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we have four items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled for discussion?
Seeing none, I move that the council adopt, concur with the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one committee report from the committee of the whole. A reading, for first reading.
The committee of the whole committee report is regarding Puget Sound Access Lease Third Amendment. The committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the third addendum to the lease, LAG 13-001, with Puget Sound Access, PSA, in order to provide PSA $40,000 in consideration for its continued management of cargo theaters operation in 2017. This is signed by Council President Pavoni.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move that the council concur with the committee of the whole committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the committee of the whole report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McIrvin?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Witchy?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Did you do any work this week? Mr. Corman?
No, no unfinished business. No work at all, Mr. Prince.
All right, moving on to legislation, we have, we have two ordinances for second and final reading.
The first ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 4-2-110.D of Chapter Two, Zoning Districts, Uses and Standards of Title Four Development Regulations of the Renton Municipal Code, creating additional allowed projections into setbacks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, the second ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, granting unto Puget Sound Energy Incorporated, a Washington corporation, and its successors, and assigns the privilege and franchise for fifteen years to construct, operate, set, erect, support, attach, connect, maintain, repair, replace, enlarge, and use facilities for purposes of transmission, distribution, and sale of electrical energy and gas for power, heat, and light, and other purposes for which energy and gas may be used in, upon, over, under, along, across, and through the franchise area, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McIrvin?
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Ms. Perez, that this ordinance be adopted as read. I don't know, Catherine Taylor or Greg Zimmerman, should we hold this for a couple months?
[laughing].
No. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. Excuse me, roll call.
Roll call.
Forget about it. Don't say aye. We're going to do a roll call.
Mr. Pavoni?
It's first reading. Aye.
That was first reading.
It's first reading.
No, it's second.
No, it's second reading.
It says first reading on the agenda.
It says first reading on 3/27.
Oh, okay. I just didn't read all the way.
You got to get a tape, man.
Okay, so.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it, so it passes. Okay. All right, moving on to new business, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, next week, April 10th, council meeting will be, council holiday, so it's canceled. And on April 17th, committee of the whole will meet at 5:30 in the council chambers. There are three items to be discussed: legislative updates, local and regional issues, including public services contract briefing, and the third is analysis of steep slopes, slide potentials in Renton. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The transportation committee that was going to take place on April 17th has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McIrvin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the utilities committee that would have occurred on April 13th, which is a Thursday, has been canceled.
Okay. Ms. Witchy?
Yes, the community services committee meeting scheduled for Monday, April 17th has also been canceled.
Okay. Mr. Person?
Well, somebody has to work.
[laughing].
Monday, April 17th at 4:30 PM, the finance committee will meet in the council conference room. We have three topics: vouchers, the 2017 forward, carry-forward budget, first quarter amendment, 2017-2018 fee schedule amendment, and if we have time, emerging issues in revenue streams.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, April 13th, the planning and development committee meeting has been canceled.
Okay, and Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
What can I say?
Okay, what's the wish to the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We're adjourned.